Would you like to call the meeting to order? Sheila, could you call the room, please?
Mr. Young. Mr. Furman. Ms. Namie Dyer, here. Mr. Torres. Mr. Cowan.
Present.
Dr. Hans. Ms. Newman. Ms. Root, here. Ms. May, here. Ms. Woodruff, here. You have a quorum? Oh, wait.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Newman, for your awareness, Ms. um, Lazenby's out of town at a conference, but she is attending remotely.
Okay, thank you. Now it's time for our first opportunity of public comment. I see that Mr. Cummings has signed up to give public comment. We appreciate hearing from you, Mr. Collins, Mr. Cummings, but you are limited to five minutes.
All right. Red Cummings, President of the Alliance for Millieville, Okanagan County. This shouldn't take long. Um, I attended the Board of Association meeting last week. It was kind of interesting. Saw you there. Um, I wanted to draw your attention to one of the sessions that I went to, which was session number two. I don't know, were you in session two by any chance? It's the, uh, children's session. Uh, and it's a report by North Point, who's a upper peninsula CMH. And they've got, uh, it sounds like a pretty good, uh, service for dealing with children in schools. The thing that appeals to me is, uh, some people think that they need to put a bunch of, uh, uh, mental health people in the schools and, uh, give them careers in something, teaching or something, I'm not sure. It was certainly not a career path for mental health people. But, uh, the approach here was that, uh, they connect with the schools, they collaborate with the schools. They get those teachers turned into recognizing if people have, children have a problem and needs to be addressed. The teachers have a school contact, contact who they notify they've got a child who needs help, who con- contacts the CMH person, contact, who then arranges for a psychiatric social worker or otherwise, uh, to come to the school to meet with the child and the family. And, uh, so we don't ever pull people away from the school, they don't make them show up someplace else. Uh, and it's very, it's still very school-based, but it's bringing the care to them in the school. And it keeps CMH doing mental health work and school, uh, teachers' teaching. And I think that's very important. We don't need to make teachers do more things and try to solve problems that they're not trained in. So, I think it's a very good arrangement, it sounds like we've got a pretty stable operation there. And if nobody else is doing it, it's worth taking a look at, so. Bring that to you, it's something to look at. That's it, thank you.
There's no one online.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make public comment? Okay, thank you. Approval of our agenda for today?
So moved.
It's been moved in support. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Now it's time for our policy management, uh, side of the meeting. We have our annual recipient rights record, report with Vicky Suter.
Good afternoon. Thank you for an opportunity presented. Uh, Jean wasn't able to make it in today, so it'll just be me. So each year we have to file a rights report, uh, based on a format given to us by the department's recipient rights team. And so, um, most of this information, uh, is taken from that report. There is some additional information that we provide to try to give you information on the data that puts it in some context. Additionally, in, in our fiscal year 22 report, the department didn't ask us for all the information that they had typically asked in the past. So a couple of things that they didn't ask for in this report, but we reported, uh, in our presentation today, is the, uh, timeframes for investigations to be completed, the complaint source, uh, remediation data. They didn't ask for information related to adults with development disability or mental illness. But we continue to provide it, uh, because the reports that we generate here to do our state report gives us that information. So we went ahead and presented that anyways. So our first slide talks about our complaint data. In fiscal year 22, we had seven hundred and seventy-eight allegations. Uh, that includes complaints that we open up for investigation as well as those that are considered to be no right involved or not our jurisdiction. We investigated seven hundred and sixteen of those, which is ninety-one percent of the allegations we received. And then we substantiated two hundred and twenty-nine of those investigated, which is a thirty-two percent rate. Anytime that the information is taken directly from the state report, which I provided, do that full state report, it'll indicate on the slide what page of the report that data was taken from. Okay, so this slide just gives you a five-year trend of our allegations that were investigated versus, and those that were substantiated. So we were down a little bit this year from the previous year. Um, and we did notice that all throughout the year, this was not like a one-time event. All throughout the year, it seemed that our investigations, uh, were, uh, less than the previous year. But still within similar ranges to a couple of years ago. Complaint data comparison, so this is just, uh, we do some comparison as to our substantiation rate. Uh, this year it was a thirty-two percent. We don't have the state report yet because it has not been issued, but we, we, uh, look at that compared to the state overall rate. Uh, last year it was, our rate was thirty-seven percent and the state's was forty-three. Not too out of whack, not too much of a difference. Complaint source, so this is where we receive our complaints. And again, we just did a comparison of fiscal year 21 to 22. There's not a large difference. Uh, typically, the larger, uh, complaint source is our, our team. And that's because we open quite a few investigations off incident reports. We, we review all incident reports that come in through the year, there's over twenty thousand of those. Uh, then our next highest is, that would be staff on our provider network as well as staff within the residential provider, all throughout the provider network. Yeah.
So, Vicky, just to clarify, that's, that's not our staff-
Correct.
-with the network, it's the, it's the provider staff, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And then timeframes for completing investigations. There we go. And we are required to complete an investigation within ninety days. We, uh, did not go over ninety days in any of our investigations. And as you can see, about thirty-three percent of our cases were completed in sixty days or less. As I mentioned, we have thirty days to complete our investigation by the Mental Health Code. Uh, last, uh, fiscal year 21, we had an average completion of investigations of about sixty-four days. Uh, this past year, fiscal year 22, we had a sixty-six, uh, day average. Our goal internally, um, we don't want to really go to ninety days for most of our cases. Our goal is to have an average of less than seventy-five days to complete our, our investigation. So we've, we've met that goal of ours. Next slide. Appeals information, so individuals have a right to appeal. Uh, the complainant, the individual served and the guardian has, has the right to appeal the results of an investigation. We have a separate appeals committee, which the board appoints. And when I receive those appeals, I run those appeals by the board chair as well as one or two other members of the appeals committee to ensure that the appeals meet the criteria, uh, of an appeal. We received fifteen. That committee, work group committee, accepted fourteen of them, one of them did not meet the criteria. The committee upheld all four, uh, all four appeals, meaning they upheld the, the results of the investigation. I can, I don't have the information up there, but I can say that, uh, opponents also have a second level appeal which goes to the state. And several of those appeals that came in for us last year, they did do, individuals did choose to do a second level appeal. Uh, all of those second level appeals, the state did uphold our appeals committee decision. Remediation total, so this, they have to be an action taken. When there's a substantiation, that provider that the staff person works for has to take some sort of action. This just gives you an idea overall of what types of actions are taken. It's very similar each year, training is usually up there. We often see training as in addition to some other remedial actions that are taken. Written reprimand is the second, as well as then employee termination. So any substantiation of abuse or neglect has to have some sort of disciplinary action, that's part of the Mental Health Code. And then remediation by individuals served. Uh, so a half waiver is individuals with a development disability. And then we see, so that's twenty percent. See almost eighty percent of the, the substantiated allegations are involved individuals with development disabilities. Uh, that's typically because those are individuals that are more often live in the specialized residential settings. Um, and so we, we seem, uh, they, uh, we typically get a number of IRs from residential settings. It's very similar as in past years. This just indicates the actions that, uh, or the substantiation against different types of providers. And as you can see the top, and this is very similar to all the past years, it's residential for adults with mental illness or development of disability. And then also SIP with the Supported Independent Program. So those aren't licensed, but they were, uh, settings where individuals do get quite a bit of support. Training provided, we're required to provide training to all new hires within thirty days. And, um, that is either through a webinar or face-to-face at this point. Our training team trained almost four thousand individuals in the past year. And then we do require all of our staff throughout our provider network to do an annual update. That's, uh, a PowerPoint that, and is also a test that is on our website. So that is computer-based and we had, uh, nearly forty-nine hundred people, uh, provide that. And then we also have three trainers with lived experience who provide training to individuals that live in residential settings. And we had four hundred and four individuals receive their, uh, training on a couple of different topics from our trainers. Progress of outcomes for fiscal year 22, so these, uh, uh, goals were established and reported in our fiscal year 21 report as were required. Uh, the first one, develop a plan to implement mentoring. Uh, we had a presentation beyond tokenism, which, which is a program about mentoring individuals that are part of committees or boards. And our RAC, uh, determined that was, that was a good effort, and so they took that on. We currently have three individuals who are assigned a mentor. We've accomplished that goal. Oh, go back, gotta do, all right. Goal two, uh, RAC members and RIT staff, um, share about each other regarding strengths, passions, and ideas. Uh, we did accomplish that. We had about seven meetings where either, uh, RAC members or RIT staff presented about themselves. And then discuss how stigma affects a person who was engaged in the RIT system, determine actions, uh, steps taken. We did discuss that at several meetings and talked about actions we could take, so that also was accomplished. So that leads us to fiscal year 23, means the RAC, next slide, the RAC committee has to establish goals for that year. And their goals for the, three goals for fiscal year 23 are develop a candle of trainings for the RAC members, trainings that would benefit in their knowledge and being a participant on the RAC committee. Uh, members get to know each other and be understood. And then three, determine what RAC can do to make a difference in the lives of persons served by bringing issues about rights to the meeting and identify a list of concerns. Uh, they have some very spirited and, and very informative discussions, uh, related to that goal. And then lastly, the recommendations, there's that the, this agency as well as the board provides support to the RIT's office. The board reviews the periodic reports and recommendations, and that the board considers RIT's topics for, uh, some of their board study sessions. That is the report that was submitted. Any comments or questions?
Any comments or questions for Vicky?
Jonathan?
Yes, um, so I missed this, I apologize for missing the beginning of your presentation.
No problem.
But I know how these are, how do we do with the ninety-day rule in terms of the number of cases?
Yeah, we had no cases that went over ninety days.
That, I don't know if you said, but that has been one of the challenges we've had for like the past five years of staffing getting those through.
Yeah, I think we had zero last year too, but yeah, we, we had a few in the past years.
Yeah, amazing. That is a really hard thing for, for this team that they work on, to make those days, just so the board knows that. And that is something that the state loves to tick us at and give us a demerit.
So, Vicky, this, uh, among other things, this involves allegations of abuse or neglect.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't see anything, and maybe I missed it in the report, but at what point are there referrals to police authorities, um, that occur? And how often does that happen?
I could not, I couldn't exactly give you the numbers, but anytime there's a suspicion of abuse or neglect, there's, there's a requirement to report to adopt protective services licensing that happens regularly right in our investigative report. Our investigators indicate they've done that if there seems to be criminal activity. Typically, that will get reported before it gets to us.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah, we just actually just finished a case where, uh, there was a criminal investigation involved right along while we were doing our investigation.
Okay. I did think that there was a requirement that if we, if it met certain thresholds that we had to report it.
Yeah, so typically whoever discovers the incident first, if they're a required reporter, they do the reporting. But, but we do refer a number of things APS, and they do to us as well. The back and forth agreement.
Good, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Next we have the QOPPIP report with Marquita Massey.
Good evening. I am here today with, um, Adam Hamilton. And we will be providing you with an overview of our Quality Assessment, Performance, and Improvement Program. So in your board packet, you received, uh, two documents. You received the year-end report and you also received, uh, QOPPIP for fiscal year 23. Both are very comprehensive reports. Our intent is to, um, not go through all the content of those, uh, documents, but to, um, highlight some important areas and answer, uh, any questions that you may have. Um, just as a reminder, it's important to note that throughout the year, when staff present to you on various topics, those topics are, are tied to, uh, the QOPPIP. And many of those, uh, topics are tied to the QOPPIP. So at year end, what we're required to do is to aggregate all that information into one document and, um, to share it with the board and, uh, to answer any, uh, questions. The, uh, QOPPIP plan is, uh, a, uh, a static, uh, document. It's really, um, the requirement is to outline the structural components that have to be addressed in the QOPPIP. We did make some high-level changes this year. Uh, we made a change to state that the lead behavioral health practitioner, which is our chief medical officer, must be an MD, a psych D, or have a clinical PhD. That was a recommendation we received from NCQA, although we've always met that requirement here at OCHN. It was not specifically stated in, uh, QOPPIP documentation, so we, uh, had to add that. Uh, another area that we added was the analysis of long-term services and supports. That's a requirement that the department requires that we segment out how individuals that are receiving those services, um, we have to be able to report how, how we're doing in that area. We've always included those, uh, services in any analysis that, um, we've done. But it's a requirement that those, uh, services be segmented out. So some examples of those types of services that would fall into that category would be CLS, uh, respite, supported and integrated employment, um, and much of, many of the services that we do. And as I mentioned, we've always included those services in any, um, analysis that we've done. Uh, one other change that we'll be making is adding a narrative on the Substance Use Disorder Oversight Policy Board, Policy Board to this, uh, document. So you'll see that. Um, this slide here, um, I want to cover, just to give you a little background on what the QOPPIP is and why is it required. It, uh, basically is the framework that is handed down to us in our contract from the department that outlines all the elements that we have to address. Uh, all the PHPs statewide have to have a QOPPIP. It's, uh, reviewed by, um, accrediting bodies. It's also, uh, reviewed by the External Quality Review Organization annually. It gets a lot of attention on that. It, um, also is now being reviewed by, uh, the department. And it spells out the, uh, minimum requirements that have to be, uh, met to, uh, meet the CMS requirements. Our quality committee structure, which is one of the diagrams you'll see in the document, outlines all the, how we meet, uh, these requirements. So each year, each committee establishes goals and objectives. And at year end, an assessment is done to determine, um, how we did. And, uh, determine the status, any barriers, and accomplishments that were made. So, uh, the QOPPIP is, uh, a, a document that touches all areas of the organization. Um, many staff contribute to it. And this is, as I mentioned, it's just an overview of all the activity that happens, uh, within the organization. Uh, here in terms of the impact on, uh, persons served, just highlighting the things that are already, um, spoke about. These are important elements that we have to ensure that we are addressing in our program. Uh, next slide, talks about what's required of the board. Uh, the board is required to approve the QOPPIP. Uh, we are also required to provide you with periodic status reports on, uh, the content of the QOPPIP. Um, just to, uh, tie in how we've accomplished this. In fiscal year 22, we provided the year-end report to the board and also the annual QOPPIP. We also provided quarterly updates from, uh, various teams within the organization. There's an annual external event review committee report that's presented to the board. We've, uh, presented the board with, uh, compliance committee reports. Uh, annual plan updates also address this area. And then also the member experience reports that we provide the board with in terms of, um, outcomes. Can move to the next slide. Uh, so as I mentioned, the QOPPIP is the foundation of our, our QI program. And the requirements are handed down to us that we have to meet. Our, uh, QOPPIP has always fared, uh, well with, um, reviews from external review bodies. Um, our QOPPIP, uh, exceeds the requirements that the department has set for us in terms of highlighting our medical director involvement and all the committees that Dr. Poseos is involved in. We have multiple venues for participation for persons served. We have the, uh, CAC, the CEEC. We have, uh, the Strategic Planning Committee Work Group. And we also have the Recipient Rights Advisory Committee. So, um, our QI committees also that we have highlighted in the diagram that you have in the document, uh, goes beyond the, uh, scope of what's required as well. Um, every quality committee that we have in place here is highlighted there. But there are also many other work groups that we have in operations here at OCHN that, um, help to contribute to our quality program that aren't formal, uh, committees, but they are still charged with, um, looking at performance issues and recommending actions for improvement. Move on to the next slide, please. Uh, in terms of policy and fiscal implications, um, I mentioned that this was supported by federal requirements. We have to do it. Um, it's required by our contract, also by NCQA, and, um, are the External Quality Review Organization, which you may hear us refer to as HVAC, which stands for Health Services Advisory Group. It also reviews the elements of our QOPPIP and, um, scores how well we're meeting those requirements. So our quality program is required to have three documents. There's the, uh, QOPPIP, there's the year-end report, and then there's also, uh, the work plan, which is developed after the QOPPIP is approved for the fiscal year. Moving on to the next slide. This slide talks about, uh, quality, the, the areas that are addressed in our QOPPIP that are directly tied to what NCQA requires. Uh, quality of clinical care, safety of clinical care, quality of services, and member experiences. On, uh, the table of contents of both the QOPPIP and the year-end report, you will see how each of our quality committees tie into each of those areas that are required by NCQA. So this is the committee structure that I've been referring to. Um, you can see from here that, uh, there are the committees listed across the, uh, bottom of this flow that report up to the Quality Council that's chaired by Dr. Poseos, that feeds into our QOPPIP QI plan that is presented to the board for approval, um, on an annual basis. In our year-end report, we, um, talk about the major accomplishment, major accomplishments of each of the committees. We talk about the barriers to achieving any of the objectives. Uh, why did we not meet certain areas? Um, and recommendations for what we're going to do to overcome the issues and the barriers and our plans for the coming fiscal year. So now, we want to, um, get into some of the specific areas that address the elements that are required by NCQA. I am going to talk about the Quality Improvement Council and the HEDIS metrics. And then Adam's going to cover the Improving Practices Leadership Team and the Integrated Healthcare Team. So in terms of our Quality Improvement Council, um, I mentioned that Dr. Poseos, uh, chairs that. We have additional key leadership that are on that committee. The, uh, purpose is that all QI activity flows up to that committee through, uh, the work plan. The QI council refer, reviews, um, performance on our, uh, quality measures. They review, uh, performance on what we're doing with the HEDIS scores. They review the, uh, reports that we have to submit to NCQA in terms of our, um, adequacy reports and our, uh, care management reports. Um, NCQA, NCQA expects to see that, uh, the medical director and medical directors out in the network, that they've had a role in contributing to, um, any quality improvement projects within the network. In terms of, um, the HEDIS metrics, um, you will find those on pages, uh, six and seven, uh, the one that I'm going to highlight, um, which is also our performance improvement project, one of our two performance improvement projects that the state requires us to do. Uh, this one is, uh, reviewed by Health Services Advisory Group. And this is improving antidepressant medication management at, um, eighty-four days. The department- The department has mandated that all PIHPs have a Performance Improvement Project that is focused on reducing disparity. So this is the project that was selected to focus on by OCHN in consultation with, um, our medical staff within the network. Our, uh, baseline performance rate for this metric was 53.2% and for the African-American rate, it was 46.2%. So our intent here is to reduce disparity between the index, uh, group, which is, uh, the white population and, uh, uh, minor, and a minority group, which in this case is the, um, African-American group. So the intent is to decrease the disparity without decreasing any of the performance with the, um, index rate. So this was our first year for, uh, this, uh, project. So, um, there are some actions that, we don't have any trend data yet, um, we will, that is, um, yet to come, but some of the barriers that have been, um, identified are ensuring medication safety between transitions of care, uh, mental health literacy. So some of the interventions that would be, that have been identified that we can focus on by the, that's been identified by the, uh, physicians within our network is to ensure that education is being, uh, given to, uh, prescribers on expectations between transitions of care, ensuring and encouraging, uh, shared decision-making. Um, another HEDIS metric that I want to highlight is, um, you'll find on page 33 of the year-end report speaks to antipsychotic, uh, medication adherence for persons with schizophrenia, that they are remaining on the medications for 80% of the treatment period. The goal is, uh, 73%. Our performance declined in the fiscal year, starting from a high of 63% in quarter one to, uh, 54% of fiscal year end. Some of the, uh, barriers contributing to those performance rates are due to the lingering effects of COVID, um, side effects from medications. There are issues that are in place in terms of transportation to area pharmacies because not all offer delivery services. Some of the interventions that have been identified is, uh, encouraging use of long-acting medications, working with, uh, people served to help to, uh, manage the side effects and then again, use of, uh, shared decision-making. So those are all, um, interventions and barriers that have been identified through, um, our medical directors within the network and as I mentioned, that committee is chaired by, uh, Dr. Poseos. I want to turn this over to you, Adam, now to speak on the, um, other committees.
Okay. Good evening. Uh, I'm Adam Hamilton. I am one of the directors on the Clinical Practice Team here. So I'll talk to you about a couple of the, uh, committees that, uh, the Clinical Practice Team directly participates in. Um, the first one I'll talk to you about is the Improving Practices Leadership Team or IPLT for short. Uh, the primary charge of the IPLT is to ensure that across the network, um, evidence-based practices, best practices are being used. Um, the Clinical Practice Team leads this committee. I usually facilitate and then we have representation from providers from across the network. Um, a big part of the work that we do every year is we look at all of our clinical protocols that are up for review and revision that year. Uh, it's very important with NCQA that we elicit feedback from the provider network about those protocols. We integrate that feedback. We use the opportunity to meet with the, uh, clinical leadership from across the network to, um, engage, uh, them and their staff in workgroups to further review those protocols to make revisions. And then when the, uh, the, the new protocols or the revised protocols are completed, they are, um, put into our manual of protocols for the next fiscal year. We have a group of, uh, clinical analysts on my team and they are involved in many workgroups at the state level and across, um, different, uh, venues in our system as well. So the IPLT becomes a place that we can bring that information back and, uh, impart it to the clinical leadership across our network. It's a good opportunity for us to convey information about evidence-based practices that MDHHS is promoting and offering training opportunities for, uh, to the provider network. And then, um, you know, one of the things that we're continuing to work on is we, is we try to really rebuild capacity among the providers to, to offer those evidence-based practices is really getting them engaged and making sure that they are aware of those training opportunities, have the opportunity to send their staff to do that. Um, we also use the opportunity to review any major changes that might be happening. So if there's, um, uh, provider bulletins, for example, that have implications for the providers, we can discuss them there, answer questions. Um, and if there are, uh, audits done on any of our clinical protocols and we can share feedback about those with the network, we'll use the opportunity, um, at the IPLT to discuss those. I think a good example of, um, of a, a clinical practice guideline that we have, that we have, uh, done audits on and, and looked at provider, provider performance is our clinical pathway for suicide care. So again, we will get feedback on the content of that, uh, clinical practice guideline from the IPLT and then we have, um, an internal audit that happens of a provider's performance against that and we can share that information with them there as well. And then, do you want me to go right into integrated healthcare? Is that okay? All right. We also have an Integrated Healthcare Committee. Our, um, nurse case managers really lead this, though we do have representation from across the organization at that, uh, committee meeting as well as the providers, um, also have, uh, are, they're well represented there. Um, the, the primary charge of the Integrated Healthcare Committee is, is to ensure that we are making progress on our efforts to integrate fiscal healthcare into the behavioral healthcare services that we provide. Um, we do a lot of review of many of the HEDIS metrics that Marquita was already referring to at this meeting. It's another opportunity to speak directly to the provider network about things that they are doing to improve performance relative to those metrics. Um, and then the providers also have the opportunity there to report back to us on how they feel things are going, things that they're trying to make progress on. Maybe, um, it's the case that they have their own performance improvement projects going on internally so they can share ideas and, and give feedback about those things as well. Uh, the Integrated Healthcare Committee is a good chance to also speak about, um, programs that we have here at OCHN like complex case management. We can orient the provider network to what complex case management is, how to submit referrals for that program, who would be a good fit for that program, um, and then we can, uh, you know, continue to, to have conversation about how that's working for individuals. Similarly, we are, um, required by, uh, MDHHS contract to, you know, partner with Medicaid Health Plans to do what we call shared care plans. So this is another opportunity for us to educate the provider network, talk about that as well. Some of the, uh, performance improvement projects that are discussed there would be along the same lines as what Marquita was, was, was already discussing. Um, a, a, a big one was working with, uh, the providers to improve our performance on a metric that looks at having individuals who have a diagnosis of schizophrenia or bipolar, um, have a screening for diabetes as well. And so, you know, that's one that we've done a lot of work on over the past few years, the nurse case managers and, and some other staff on their team, um, looking at data to identify individuals who haven't had that screening and then sending out literally hundreds of letters and doing outreach every quarter. And then in some particular situations, the nurse case managers were able to partner with, uh, the provider network and help resolve some barriers like looking at transportation problems to getting the medical appointments, um, to have those screenings done. They also will use the opportunity to provide some information about other, uh, events, resources, opportunities. Um, cancer awareness was a, a, uh, recurring theme during fiscal year 22, um, and there was a partnership with the Michigan Cancer Consortium in Carmanos and, uh, they were able to come speak at a couple of the Integrated Healthcare Meetings and then we were able to share some information about a mobile mammogram and health screening center. Um, so, uh, aside from that, it's, it's a regular agenda item to, uh, again, review all of those HEDIS metrics and then, um, talk about the interventions that are being implemented to improve performance there. And I think when we get to the next slide, I'll talk a little bit about the Medical Directors' Advisory Group. Marquita also alluded to this and I'll talk about their role in informing how, uh, those interventions are devised. Am I okay to keep going? Okay. Um, I'm going to ta, talk a little bit about our Sentinel Event Review Committee or our CIRK. Actually, I'm, I think I'll be back, I think it's next month to give you a kind of a full report on the fiscal year 22 activities of the CIRK and some of the, the data that we look at there. Um, the, the CIRK reviews all of the incidents that are, uh, that meet the definition of a critical event. So this would include all arrests, deaths, emergency medical treatment due to injuries or medication errors, hospitalizations due to injuries or medication errors. The primary charge is to review those critical incidents to determine if they meet the definition of a sentinel event. Uh, when, uh, when the CIRK deems that a critical incident does indeed meet the definition of a sentinel event, we require, uh, that the, the, the provider agency who is involved in that, uh, complete what's called a root cause analysis. And this is really a request that we make that they look at what happened, identify root causes of what happened and then submit a plan back to us in an effort to, uh, prevent that occurrence from happening again. So, uh, we, we do that. We meet weekly to do this. We meet monthly to review those root cause analyses and then, um, you know, ongoing follow-up is done if, if needed to, uh, to resolve those things. Um, one of the big things that we focused on in fiscal year 22 was revising our processes. Our nurse case managers have become more involved in reviewing events where there's medical involvement or deaths. Um, this is really part of our requirement to, to meet some timeframes, um, yeah, with our CIRK. So, uh, we've been fortunate to have the nurses be able to step in and help us meet the requirement to have a, a medical professional involved with some of those reviews as well. Um, and we've seen, you know, significant improvement from the start of the year to the end of the year and, and continuing, uh, regarding those timeframes. Um, monthly at the CIRK, uh, Marquita's team has a representative who comes and reports to us on risk events as well. So risk events are events that, um, because of their occurrence, might put an individual at risk for a, a, a poor negative outcome. So a, a lot of these occur, um, in specialized residential or other settings. So, um, Marquita's, um, team brings some data. We review, um, at a high level how the, how the provider network is performing regarding the risk events and then we have the opportunity to share feedback with, with her team there too. Regarding the Medical Directors Advisory Group, I do attend and participate in that. Dr. Poseos obviously would lead that. Um, so he's, he's, um, charged with kind of directing the activities of that group and the, the primary function of that group is to ensure that best practices where possible evidence-based practices are used. Um, it's another opportunity to really connect with a group of practitioners, namely the medical directors or chief medical officers or, uh, leadership from the provider agencies who are providing medical services and engage them in the work that we're doing here. They can, uh, one of the things we did in fiscal year 22 is we looked at our psychiatric, psychiatric protocol. Uh, Dr. Poseos was able to partner with me to work on revisions of that. We took that to the Medical Directors Advisory Group and we were able to elicit feedback from that group, um, on changes they would like to see. So, um, that helps us to make sure we have a, a protocol that really represents what the field thinks is, is best practice. Um, they also, the medical directors and other members of that group also have the opportunity to look at the same set of metrics, HEDIS measures predominantly, and then they help us by suggesting interventions that would improve provider performance on those metrics. So it's really important that we get their feedback. Um, the, the feedback of medical professionals on this is, is, is helpful and informative to us and increases the likelihood that the interventions are going to have the intended impact. So those recommendations would be carried forward to other committees where they can be talked about and then, um, providers have the opportunity to come back, tell us how things are going. We can go back to the medical directors, provide updates, make adjustments if necessary.
Thank you, Adam. Then, um, I'm going to talk a little bit about, uh, quality of services that, uh, ties into our QOPP, uh, the areas that, um, I want to highlight pertain to credentialing and privileging and our, our network, uh, quality improvement activities. So in terms of credentialing and, uh, privileging, this is a very important component of, uh, ensuring quality services. Uh, the board, you may recall that we began working with Medpercent in fiscal year 22. Medpercent is a credentialing verification organization. Um, Medpercent and they're also NCQA accredited. Medpercent, um, will, uh, help us to ensure that we have a consistent process for documenting credentialing activity across our network. In fiscal year 22, um, we started off with a, um, specific provider type to, uh, really orient ourselves to the process and work out, try to work out any, uh, bugs so that when we roll it out to the entire network, it would, uh, run more smoothly. So we are in the beginning stages now of rolling Medpercent out to, uh, our core providers. Um, we are going to do this, uh, gradually, uh, still to allow us time to work out any, uh, issues and, uh, bugs. Throughout the year, we've been meeting with our provider staff that are responsible for credentialing. Initially, we were meeting with them on a quarterly basis. We found the need that we had to ramp that up to a monthly basis, so we meet with those, uh, provider types, uh, monthly. Dr. Poseos is also the, uh, Chair of that committee, which is a requirement for NCQA. But at those meetings, we provide education and training to the, uh, network on what's required for, for credentialing. Uh, we, uh, review files that are presented from, uh, Medpercent for credentialing. If a file is clean, which means that there are no issues with the file, file came back, um, with no, um, sanctions, educational requirements checked out, um, work history checked out, um, and there were no, no issues. So that's considered a clean file. Those files are reviewed for approval, presented for approval at the committee. And, um, in terms of files that may have been identified as an unclean file, there are discussions that occur, uh, pertaining to those files. So if a file is returned as an unclean file, an example of what that might pertain to is maybe something came up as a flag on a background check, uh, maybe there was a gap in work history that, uh, was more than six months that was not a, addressed. Uh, maybe there was an, uh, an educational issue that, uh, needed to be addressed. So those are the kind of issues that we would discuss at the credentialing committee and make a determination as to whether or not that file should be moved forward for credentialing. So it's important that we have network practitioners be a part of that discussion and, and dialogue. So we have good representation from the, uh, staff within our network. And the information that is, um, utilized in credentialing decisions in terms of, uh, practitioners is used to populate our, uh, provider directory that is available on our website. Um, in terms of, um, network quality improvement coordinators, the, uh, we have, uh, bi-monthly meetings with, uh, quality improvement staff within the network. One of our staff member, one of the managers within our team leads that activity. This is, um, an opportunity for, uh, network staff that are responsible for quality improvement to have, uh, collaboration with other, uh, network staff and to, uh, have a, a free-flowing discussion on ideals and, um, actions that maybe, uh, they want to recommend to OCHN for consideration. Uh, they provide feedback on any, uh, project design that, uh, we are rolling out to the network. Um, we have all core providers presented on that. out to the network. We have all core providers presented on that committee. Now that we've taken on some new core providers, we'll be adding those core providers to the network as well. In terms of our direct service providers, the provider network team leads quarterly meetings with our specialized residential providers, our vocational providers. We also have meetings that the PNT leads with our EBA providers. So no provider type is left untouched. We meet with all those providers to provide them with, you know, technical assistance, guidance. It's an opportunity for them to ask any questions and for us to get feedback from them on what we could be doing differently to maybe assist them. I also wanna highlight the direct service providers that have worked diligently over the past few years to ensure that our practices are meeting home and community-based services requirements. Those providers have worked diligently to be very responsive in regards to survey requests. They've completed all corrective action plans and have been receptive to scheduling site visits whenever they've been needed. We had a number of settings that were listed on the hide and scrutiny list that the department published, but due to the work that has been done by our direct service providers in the network in terms of the caps that I just submitted and being responsive and implementing new processes and practices to ensure compliance with HCBS, the department shared that based on their review, because the department also did a review to determine and assess if the corrective action plans were going to meet HCBS requirements. So based on all of that, the department has submitted recommendations to CMS that all the settings that were on hide and scrutiny status be removed from hide and scrutiny status. That's been recommended to CMS. However, until we hear back from CMS, that is just a recommendation. CMS has to confirm whether or not they are in agreement. So in the interim, we will continue to work with those providers. We will continue to do our audits to make sure that the network staff are continuing to comply with the HCBS requirements. Next slide, please. I want to talk a little bit about member experience. Our groups that fall into that category that I want to highlight would be our CEEC, the Community Evaluation Education Committee. I also wanna highlight a little bit about member satisfaction activity and also our recipient rights advisory committee. In terms of the CEEC, the CEEC has an ongoing goal to recruit new members for participation on that committee. That's a committee that, where the membership consists of persons that are currently receiving services or may have received services in the past. So during Fiscal Year Twenty Two, two new members were identified to participate on the committee. This committee during Fiscal Year Twenty Two provided feedback on the explanation of benefits document that we are required to distribute to a percentage of persons served. That's a requirement in our contract. The CEEC wanted to make sure that it was clearly identified that the explanation of benefits was not a bill, so that a person that received that, you wanted to make sure that persons wouldn't become anxious by thinking that that was a bill and something that they had to be responsible for. The other suggestion that was made by the CEEC was to not call it an explanation of benefits, because everybody may not know what that means. So their recommendation was to call it a summary of services, which we incorporated the suggestions from the CEEC into our processes. So that is called a summary of services versus an EOB. The CEEC also provided input on the first year of our telemedicine survey that has been administered by MSET. When we provided the board with an update on member satisfaction back in November, that wasn't included in that. Our intent of doing that survey is to really get a feel about how persons served are feeling about receiving their services through telemed and to determine if there are any changes that are being made. And it's also a tool that can be used to help identify fraud. If service has been reported as a telemedicine service and a call is made to the person and the person says, "Well, I didn't get a, I don't recall receiving a telemedicine service," then that opens up a window for to conduct an investigation into that. In terms of the recipient rights advisory committee, goals that the committee had identified for Fiscal Year Twenty Two were to, the first one, implementing a mentoring plan. Three members were paired with mentors during the year. They meet to discuss the RRAC agenda and to discuss what should be included for discussion. Second goal was to highlight RRAC members at meetings to share strengths and passions. Seven members were highlighted during Fiscal Year Twenty Two. And then the last goal that I'm highlighting would be stigma and the effect on engaging in the right system. There were discussions at three meetings where education and trainings were completed. You can move to the next slide. So at this point, we'll answer any questions that you may have pertaining to the documents.
Ms. Root?
Thank you. I was just wondering, to what extent is cognitive processing therapy being used in our system? Because I saw we use TFCBT, and that's great for youth who have experienced trauma. But I think CBT is a really great evidence-based practice as well for adults. And the data of the results for it are pretty great. I was just recently trained in it, and I didn't realize how useful it is. It's set up to be conducted within, like, twelve sessions. So, yeah.
The evidence-based practice for PTSD that the department has really gotten behind and made some training opportunities available for would be prolonged exposure. It's, you know, it's an exposure-based treatment, obviously, that draws from elements of cognitive behavioral therapy as well. I think there's probably some overlap with CPT. Yeah. So, I mean, that's really been the push thus far. Some of the providers have also had staff trained in EMDR. You know, I think there's kind of a variety of perspectives on that particular treatment, but it is a common one. People actually will request for trauma treatment.
So, though, EMDR can cost a thousand to two thousand dollars to train a provider, right?
Yeah. I don't really think it's something that we're seeing MDHHS really get behind and offer a lot of training opportunities, probably for the reason you're describing. It also can go on for quite a while, similar to CPT, prolonged exposure, you know, twelve to fifteen sessions is probably a typical course of treatment.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
John Paul?
The Medical Directors Advisory Group, did you, how often do they meet? I'm not sure if you said that.
Monthly.
Okay. So they meet monthly. So that's very often. Okay. And then the credentialing, so you said that you review the files. So basically, it's like an audit? Is that what happens? Is it random files that are chosen, and then if you find issues?
No, it's all staff within the network have to undergo credentialing. So what I spoke about in terms of the committee is, of course, you're not gonna have a hundred percent of all staff providing clinical services on day one. Gradually, we'll get to that point. So what the committee is reviewing are the files that have gone through the process of obtaining primary source verification to be credentialed. But we also do do a random audit on a sample of credentialing files during the year as part of our QI activity.
Okay. See, then you do do a random sample as well. Okay. And then, so how often? Is that monthly as well?
The audit, it's an annual audit.
Okay. It's an annual audit. And then, but the meetings that you have for the credentialing committee, that is monthly?
That is monthly, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
The HEDIS measurements, is that for the MI as well as the substance use disorder patients?
Yes.
So it's across the board?
Yes.
Hadah?
Wajaya?
Yes. My question is about credentialing. How often is the credentialing done? I mean, is it every year, three years, five years?
Credentialing is done every two years. However, there is a process for ongoing credentialing also. So on an ongoing basis, staff have to go through the formal credentialing process every two years. But on an ongoing basis, we're still looking for, through Medpercent, license, a person still has a current license, and any sanction checks. And then there also are checks to, at the time that a file is up for re-credentialing, we're looking at adverse events and complaints that may have been lodged against a practitioner to determine if that should have a bearing on whether or not to re-credential an individual.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Marquita or Adam?
Jonathan? Thank you. I know it's a really hard thing to go through the QAPP descriptions and discussion. Continuous quality is important, but I know it's a really dry subject. So thank you guys for presenting it. So related to QAPP and continuous improvement, you guys mentioned two areas where you're trying to make improvement. One is in reducing disparity of persons served for care, and the other was about patient safety or patient medication safety. So trying to ensure that persons we serve stay on their meds full term. So what kind of process improvements are you making in those two areas to improve the disparity to get, to move African Americans up from forty-six to fifty-three, actually, to get everyone to rise, but improve the disparity, the differences?
So this is year one. I mentioned some of the interventions that the physician group has identified. One that I can think of, from what we discussed, was helping individuals to get transportation to be able to maintain, to be able to obtain their prescriptions, because not every pharmacy delivers medications. And then also providing individuals with information on how to manage side effects. So those are all things that have been identified by the doctors groups as actions to take to address those areas.
Okay. And that's for improving the disparity, or is that also for addressing the schizophrenia?
That's for addressing the schizophrenia.
Okay.
For, were you gonna say something?
One of the things that we've done to improve disparity is look at individuals who don't have a primary care physician indicated in their electronic health record, and then, you know, we can look at that data by racial and ethnic background. And then we can disseminate reports with information to the providers to say, "These individuals you're serving don't have a primary care physician." And so then they can follow up and make the connection to primary care. And then that can get somebody on the track to improve their health outcomes.
So when we identify someone who doesn't have a primary care physician identified, are we asking the folks at the case management, folks that Easter, or they're handling their cases at Easter Seals and Mark and other places, to encourage them? Or are we making referrals for them to go to, like, Honor? What is it, the word? Are we incenting the member to, a person served, that if they do sign up with one, then that there's some sort of incentive, like a, I don't know, coffee cart or something? What kind of things are we trying to do to make the change?
So, yes, we would pass that information to our provider agencies to then act upon. We have incentives in our contracts with them to look at the percentage of people who they have, who they're supporting and who have primary care physicians and have had, like, a health screening or medical service by a primary care physician. So what they do would be, would vary depending on the provider. So, you know, they might have a co-located primary care site with Honor in their clinic. They can make connections there. You know, many of our providers are also Health Home Partners in the Behavioral Health Program. So some of these individuals who don't have a primary care physician might also be appropriate for another program like that. There's a variety of things that they can do.
So, and maybe you said it, and I just misunderstood, but do we actually have an incentive program where we, if they've increased, you know, let's say they're at forty percent and they get up to forty-five percent of those now are signed up with a PCP?
Yeah. So we look at the provider's performance, and if the providers were to provide some incentive to an individual, you know, that would vary by provider. We don't mandate a certain approach, but we look at the provider performance.
Right. But are we also, do we have an incentive in place between us and our providers to actually help them to drive that, too?
Yeah. Well, with regard to the reducing disparity metric that we look at, we have an incentive in our PHE contract.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
John Paul, did you have another question? Okay. Any other, Wajaya?
Yeah. The question is about PCPs. In the community, a lot of people are not able to find PCPs to be able to enroll as a new patient or a new client. So all these providers that we have, do they have the capacity to accept the new incoming candidates, or is there a barrier there? And how do we monitor that? I mean, they may have, like, four thousand, they may have a capacity for four thousand, but what happens if we go to four thousand, two hundred? What happens to those people?
Yeah. I think that is certainly a challenge with the limited number of primary care physicians. And, you know, I think we're fortunate to have the partnership with Honor Health. I think they do support a great number of our, of the individuals who are receiving services in our system. You know, I'm not commonly hearing that there are major challenges getting individuals into primary care physicians, but I don't think that means that it's not happening. I think it means that it is, I mean, for example, I had to reschedule an appointment with my own primary care physician from December. I'm not going till May. So I think it is certainly an ongoing challenge. And, you know, I think we're fortunate to have a variety of programs such as Behavioral Health Home. CCBHC is another area where I think we're seeing raised expectations with regard to healthcare coordination. So I think those things are helping, if only because there's more persistence in focusing on the issue. Yeah.
Any other questions?
I have one. When I did my workshop at the conference last week, one of the board members that sat in on it was talking about how do we, how far into the weeds do we get to get information to the board? And I told him, you know, "We don't get into the weeds. We have one employee, and we get our information from the CEO." But it caused me to start thinking, especially listening to quality improvement. There's programs that's going on for quality improvement. I'm not sure that we are aware of some of the things that the core agencies are doing, some of the findings. I know when you do the QAPP, it's certain measures that the department puts in place that we have to look at. But I'm just wondering, is there other things that are not working properly or not up to snuff that we never hear about?
So I mentioned that there are other workgroups within the organization that staff participate on and engage with our providers to to, um, ensure that when things are identified that need to be worked on, uh, we, uh, charge our providers with, uh, addressing that. We also do a provider evaluation annually that, um, outlines, uh, provider performance that, that, um, includes some information that is in the QPIP, but it also includes other information as well. So there, we have a plethora of information and of data that we look at to assess what the network is, is doing. The QPIP aggregates, as you, uh, mentioned, um, aggregates all the information that we are required to, the minimum that we are required to have in place, uh, by the department that we have to, to share with the board. But there are other, um, areas that, uh, we are, are looking at for all of our provider types.
Well, my question is, does that information ever come to us about the quality improvement programs that the core agencies are on? Or any other, um, quality issue that's not part of the QPIP?
So, um, last year, you may recall that we had, uh, quarterly reports that we provided to the board on activities that happen within each of the teams. That's where that kind of information, um, would have been included.
So you do talk about the types of, uh, quality improvement measures that are taking place and what the core agencies are doing? Because I don't remember that.
Yeah, those, um, quarterly reports, what we do, we are, we are administrators of service. So we have oversight of whatever's happening out in the network. So the information that we present to, uh, the board on performance is a culmination of all that activity that we've, um, assessed from the providers within the network. So that's how it, it all ties, uh, together.
I guess I'm just, maybe I'm looking for more information than, than we previously gotten because I always have a sense in the back of my mind that there's things that are going on that are not going so well. And when do we hear the information about what's not going well? It seems like to me most of the time when, when reports are given, it's always the, the good news. And I'm, and maybe it's just me, but I just wonder what else is going on that we don't hear about that we really should hear about? And, um, how, how will we even know to come to Dana to say we want more information on A, B, C, and D? And I guess the answer's coming.
Um, Malkaya, I believe that at our last, um, at our last study session, we talked about an upcoming study session where we were gonna talk about performance outcomes and other measures, uh, in depth. And I know that, I don't remember if that's in April or which month that is.
I believe you scheduled that for April. I think, uh, Mr. Hooper's gonna talk about the compliance reports that you shared with quarterly as well.
Okay. Right, um, so Ms. Newman, uh, in addition to, uh, the QPIP, and the QPIP, we, we have put a significant amount of work into revising the QPIP to reflect, um, both what the board has done most recently, uh, in changing its policies and the bylaws, et cetera, but also in reflecting generally the scope of what we do with respect to quality. Um, and, um, as we were told, the, the document is itself designed specifically for use, um, by the state and also by N C Q A. Um, Marquita, on a regular basis, gives quarterly reports, and those quarterly reports do report, um, a significant amount of information about what the trends are with respect to each of our providers. There are issues that go on, on a regular basis that we investigate, uh, and there are providers that on a regular basis find themselves on plans, um, of correction. However, we don't, we don't particularly present that information in a public forum. Um, and typically, that information, um, which we investigate at different times of the year for different, um, for different providers, and then of course, over the course of the year, um, is aggregated into a number of different things you see. So for example, the first report that you saw regarding, um, recipient rights and all of those claims, well, all seven hundred or so of those claims represent individual items within our system that in some way or another were considered to not be right. Um, so you are getting a presentation of seven hundred different items that we have received through our function just on, um, recipient rights, um, that are investigated. The outcome of those investigations, so the roughly three hundred that were substantiated, um, we typically do not disclose that, and we do not disclose that information because those investigations often, they always include HIPAA-related information, so PHI. However, when there is a, a particular issue of consequence that, for example, is a trend, that trend is presented to you. Um, when there are issues regarding, um, how people, um, view the services that they're, that they're seeing, we have regular surveys that we, that we give, um, and you do receive that survey data, et cetera. So quality does cover a lot of ground, um, and with, with not as, it's not as, um, with not as robust resources as we would like to have, um, but quality does cover a lot of ground. The, the reality is, is that some of the information that we tell you is information that is in a general format, um, but is not specific to a specific complaint or a specific individual. Um, so, but also if you hear of something, that thing should be reported to us and we will work on those matters. We also have, in addition to that, um, a separate group, um, that, um, is customer service. And we have a significant number of calls that come in through customer service that we handle on a regular basis as well. So there are, so we have a number of different conduits, um, of information that comes into us regarding things that are working effectively and working not as effectively as we want. Um, and on an ongoing basis, we work to fix those things. Um, we don't necessarily disclose each and everything, but we disclose to you the trends that are relevant for you to be able to make policy and, and to give us guidance in that regard. So.
Thank you for the explanation. I just think that I need, um, I don't wanna say more education, but what I'm looking at, I need to understand better what it is you're giving me.
Absolutely.
When, when you do the quarterly reports. Cause when it's general, it's a lot in that, and I guess that's the part that I'm con- concerned about and would like to know more. Not to the point of disclosing PHI or any other personal information, but just the types of things that are going on, whether it's a trend or whether it's, uh, not a trend, that signal that something's going on that we should know. Because I, I, like I said before, I don't always go away from these meetings feeling like we got all the information that we should have gotten. But at, at, with that being said, how do we ask you for it? Because that's been a struggle for years.
Well, certainly with respect to quality, um, with respect to recipient rights and customer service, um, you could request that information from me and I will work with the individuals that are responsible for those departments, um, to deliver that information to you. They do report, and, uh, Marquita does report and gives a thorough report on a regular basis. We can talk more specifically, uh, about, um, the kinds of things that you may wanna see in that report.
Right.
Um, and what you may wanna know when the next report is delivered.
Okay.
Um, and certainly ask questions because, um, she has a wealth of knowledge about, about each and every provider within this network. Um, and to the extent that you have a question or a concern, please ask that question. She is prepared. It's, it's a matter that she is working on or the team is working on, or there are some matters that I work on, um, separately. And certainly, to the extent that I can disclose that, I will.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Hooper. Um, excellent points. Um, there, at any given time, uh, there are many teams within the organization that have specific areas of oversight for, uh, provider performance. And as Mr. Hooper mentioned, um, when we see things that aren't going the way they should be going, we issue corrective action plans. So they're on multiple, multiple areas.
But that's the point I was trying to make. The teams know what's going on and they have, um, they have information that we don't necessarily get. And that's the part that I was, we inquiring about.
Okay, yeah. So as, as Mr. Hooper said, if there are specific, um, areas you want information on, we'd be happy to provide it.
Thank you. Good job.
Quick question. Hi. Um, do any of the reports break down the incidents by provider? We see general, but say, like, providers that are having, you know, you're seeing the trends and the amounts of incidents, but we're not seeing, or are we seeing somewhere that I'm missing where it's broken down by provider if there is a problem provider?
We, uh, typically would not report that out in a public forum.
Okay.
But yes, we do have that, uh, information at a provider level.
Do we have any other questions? Oh, Wajaya?
Yeah, um, I think Malkaya's point is very, uh, valid. And the reason is for that is not that these, uh, things are not documented or presented. It is just that, uh, sometimes it's very difficult to grasp those. I did look at the, um, packet, but I must admit to that it, a lot of the information was not very clear to me. For example, in my case, it was a HEATIS. First off, I don't know how many in this room, nor the acronym, what it stands for, what is meant for, what is the purpose of it, and why we are below, uh, that. You did mention that, that COVID was one of the reasons, but still there has to be a little more detailed explanation as to why we did not meet that, that benchmark. So things like that, uh, need to be a little bit better explained to us for all of our benefit. Thank you.
We'll absolutely do that. Um, it is not a problem to give you, um, information regarding, um, metrics that are performance metrics, particularly those that are part of our contract. So the vast majority of the information that we provide you is information that is, that is, uh, prescribed by the state. Um, and that information is what we keep track of on a regular basis. Um, and we have, um, key performance indicators, uh, that we measure on a regular basis. We tell you about those, but we can explain to you, um, those on a more, in a more robust fashion as they are reported on quarterly. Um, and we do give quarterly reports on those as well. So you do see the information. I think where, where, um, where we are working, and legitimately, we are working at this, this year, um, in particular, is being able to communicate more in depth what exactly the information is that you receive. Um, and so this QPIP, for example, we, we have worked on, um, for, for more than a month and a half. Um, so there, there has been a great deal of time and a great deal of input to be able to make it a, a more robust document than even is required so that you can understand and see more of all of the different ways that we collect data, the different ways that we, we interface with the people that we serve, different ways that we interface with the providers, the, the different ways that we deliver information from them and collect information from them. Um, I think what you're asking for is what information it actually is and how do we interpret it? And that's, that's an absolutely fair thing, you know? And for us, because we're in the day-to-day business of, of this, um, for us to talk about HEATIS measures or K P, or KPIs is regular, ordinary conversation for us. Um, and, um, you know, I guess the, 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 the best analogy I can say is, um, it's my responsibility, it's, 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 it's her responsibility to give you enough information to not get you into the weeds, but it's my responsibility to trim the weeds to a reasonable level so you know what's in there. So I will work to do that.
We don't get in the weeds, but we do get in the tall grass.
So do I.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for your patience and your presentation. Next, we turn it over to Dennis for the business.
Um, Ms. Newman, this is an approval item for the board, um, for, on the board agenda. So you, your committee will need to make the recommendation if they're gonna approve this.
Okay, thank you. Um, is necessary for this to be an approval item on next week's board meeting? So the policy committee needs to recommend this out for, uh, consideration of the full board. So I entertain a, a motion?
I'll move.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion on the motion? Can you do a roll call, Sheila, please?
Dr. Hans?
Yes.
Ms. Root?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Budruff? Ms. Newman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, the business operations, also known as finance committee, we have, uh, six items this evening. Uh, our financial review for December, so Anya, if you, our CFO, wants to come forward. And then we have five contractual matters, uh, both amendments, uh, mostly amendments and, and contractual, uh, changes. Thank you.
Hi.
So how'd December look?
Uh, so December, I will say, you know, um, you heard me kept saying a couple of times, you know, it's early, I don't really wanna speak to where we're at. So we have a, we have a full quarter in now. Um, so I got a couple of things I wanna mention, um, so I'll, I'll get into the detail of it, um, a little bit more. But, so this is the revenue trend that you can see. The downside, I wanna say, of this slide is because we're talking about so many people and so much money, you don't see the real detail in there. And so that's part of, you see this chart, but also in your packet are the actual statements. So for me, while this is, this is good, the statements really show you kind of the, the, the oddities like that I'm looking for. When I look at very specifically, uh, year-to-date revenue versus budget. So I've, I've built our budget based on how much revenue I think we're gonna get. If we're not there, then I have to start looking at that. So again, I'll get into that a little more. Because right here, what you're looking at is October through December that looks relatively flat, no concerns, right? Um, if you jump over to the next slide, it's gonna show you a very similar pattern. You can see we're still slightly above where we were last year. So this is all well and good for right now. I know you all know that we are planning for, um, the end of the PHE, which will, I'm sorry, the Public Health Emergency, I'll try not to speak in acronyms, um, which, uh, will be in April, and I know Suzanne's gonna come up and speak to a lot more detail and to kind of what our communication and plan will, will be for that. But, so for me, that's pretty concerning because for the past two and a half years, we've had enrollment, enrollment, and nobody really falling off unless, let's say, for example, they were to be deceased. We're not seeing people fall off. So that's been great. I mean, our revenue's gone up and up and up, and, and that's good for me. So the end of the PHE will mean that people's annual re-enrollment dates will start to come due. And one, they haven't had to do that in two and a half, three years now. Um, and it, some of, I mean, some of the time, it's not an easy process. Um, requires lots of documentation and paperwork and, you know, all of that to be processed. So it doesn't always happen a, as timely or as seamlessly as I think everybody would prefer. Um, so as we look at this, and so... Um, so, a- as we look at this, and so, remember, when we did this budget, we didn't know when the PHE was ending. And so, now, um, that we know it's ending, um, part of what we will do, the actuary has said they will adjust rates. Um, do I think that'll be timely? Not really. Um, so, I suspect they're gonna want a solid six months, three to six months' worth of data, um, of how the eligibility trend is faring before they go and adjust rates. So, the downside for us is that's, that's gonna be a solid six months' worth of eligibility dropping, and therefore, revenue dropping, because the rates won't have changed, um, before they really adjust for that. Um, ideally, they would adjust for that in this fiscal year. And that would, that would, that will be my, my request to them, is to push them to adjust rates this fiscal year, not next. Because, you know, we really function on a fiscal year. It's not like I can shift money back and forth. I can't say, okay, now I got money in '24, I can use that to cover my deficit in '23. That's not how it works. So, we're not allowed to do any of that, Medicaid doesn't allow that. So, as we start to think about, we have a full quarter in, um, we know the PHE is ending, so then we begin to look at, okay, where, what's happening? Are we like flushes everything, you know, we're way above budget, and the world is, is all happy and everything's going well? Um, it's not, it's not as, as, as rose-colored as I would like. Um, I think I'm starting to see a couple of things in the eligibility trends that is concerning me. So, when we get into actual financials, I'm sorry, I've like gone off on a tangent here. If you wanna go to the next one. When we get into this, um, so, you can see, so this one, remember, is really looking at October of '22 to now. And so, in comparison, you could see our cash investments is down, our receivables are down, our assets are, you know, rough, other assets are roughly flat, and capital assets are always going down. Um, what you don't see in any of the charts, this is why I wanna talk about it a little bit, is that our, uh, budget to actual, we're about three million under year-to-date in Medicaid revenue. So, that's a million a month. So, for me, that's a big number, especially if it continues. So, what that leads me to do is to start to look into what, where is, what's happening? Like, I should still be in this, you know, honeymoon phase of we're, we're ga, we're gaining eligibles every month, people shouldn't be falling off at this point. Um, and that's not what I'm seeing right now. So, I actually, Nasser's already looking at it for me, 'cause I messaged him while we were sitting here, that I need some help looking at the eligibility trend, 'cause I see a couple of things that shouldn't be happening right now. And so, we'll start to look into that and start to see what happened. And it wouldn't be the first time we had to point out something to the department where their system didn't grab everybody, or something happened. And so, we have to pinpoint it enough to articulate to them, to be able to pinpoint it in their system, to be like, look, we should still be getting paid for more people, and then sort out outside of that. Then, I still think, and you guys recall, um, when we built the budget, the actuary said they backed it down to a 5% trend, an increase. I still didn't think that was possible. We've had, we've been on this PHE for almost three years now, there's just not that many people to continue going. So, we budgeted at a 2% increase. I'm not seeing that. So, if I, if they did rates at a 5%, I'm not even seeing 2% at this point. Something's going on with, with their trending, our actual eligibility, and the fact that as of April, we're gonna start to see people real, really fall off. So, a couple of things will happen, is we'll get to the bottom of what's going on with the people that are looking like they're falling off right now. And then, you know, I will probably check with the other CFOs and, and ask if they're seeing similar things. Ask if, if they're seeing what their trend rates look like. Is it just us that is seeing a trend rate that's essentially flat and not seeing any increase, even though the actuary said we should see a 5% increase? And then, either way, I will, of course, obtain his, uh, approval and permission, um, mi, put a request out to the department and says, you know, you, you built rates based on a 5% increase. That's not what we're seeing. So, whether that does anything, whether they will or they won't, I don't know. I, hopefully, you know, when we did push back a bit in the beginning of the year, it was at 6.3 the trend rate, they di, and they heard from a lot of us, we don't think that's realistic. They backed it down to five, I think it's 5.1. I still don't think five's realistic, and right now, we're seeing flat. So, there's a lot gonna happen in the next six months between whatever's going on here, the PHE ending. So, there's things I'm starting to see that I don't like, so we're starting to look into them, and that will kind of be an ongoing process as we, you know, go through what is our first time with a, a PHE ending. So, all of that to say, uh, revenue is not quite where I wanted it to be at this point. I wanted it to be exactly where I budgeted, of course. Um, it's about three million under, and that's specific to Medicaid. Healthy Michigan's a little over budget, that doesn't shock me. Healthy Michigan has really been our highest, um, the category that has seen the biggest increase percent-wise, because lots of people can get it, they can get on it easy, and, and whereas, the, the Medicaid population, it's a bigger process to get enrolled, there's asset tests and all of those things. So, that one's a little slower, but that's actually where I've seen the loss, which, of course, is also our biggest moneymaker. So, that's concerning for me, because that's our highest rate cell. So, that rate cell is for, 3.65. So, for every person eligible as a DAB, we get 3.65. So, that's the one where we make the most, whereas Healthy Michigan is like, uh, maybe somewhere about $80, $90. So, it's a big difference between the two. So, those are all the things we'll start to look into, start to watch far closer than we have had to in the last year or two. So, with that said, cash and investments is slightly down compared to where we were at, um, October. Uh, receivables is down, but that's, what that's happening right now is us going through all of this year-end process, us, you know, taking, okay, the things we started to book as due to providers and due to the state, and get those things processed. So, all of the things we're starting to clean up for the audit and get everything done and close out the prior fiscal year. Um, other assets is flat, and then capital assets always goes down with depreciation. Next slide, please. So, vendor payables. So, vendor payables is down slightly compared to the end of last fiscal year. And so, I wanna point that one out. So, if you recall, at the end of last fiscal year, we did a couple of things. We did some one-time provider payments, because we were able to. And so, we pushed out a lot of money at year-end, intentionally, because, because of the Public Health Emergency, we weren't using GF to the same extent we have in historical years. So, I don't wanna give back, so I'd rather push it out. So, that's what we did. So, if you guys recall, we sent, uh, bulletins telling you that we were doing these one-time provider payments. We did one that was everybody, and then we did a secondary one that was just direct service staff and/or supervisors, and so, that one went out as well. So, things were, we were pushing quite a bit more out at, at year-end there. So, that's obviously, you're seeing that be, um, pulled in a little bit, just for the beginning of the fiscal year. Um, the other piece you're not seeing in here, which is in the budget, is as of '11, we removed direct care wages to be funded at $16 an hour. So, that's not hitting this yet, because this is December. So, that, we're really not gonna see until probably February, March-ish, just because it takes a while to catch up from a financial perspective. Um, if you look at due to state, that's roughly flat. That's typically, uh, made up of the state facility portion we are required to pay. Employee payables, roughly flat, not terribly different. Um, and then long-term debt always goes down a bit with depreciation, so nothing exciting there. So, total assets, from last, the end of last fiscal year to, um, to now, uh, down slightly. So is total liabilities. So, you can see, the difference between those two looks bigger than where it ends up for net, net position. Our net position isn't terribly different. Um, it was at 58.9, and now it shows 56.1. So, not terribly different. When you look at the prior two charts there, it looks more material. But because of the two kind of offsetting each other, that's why. Okay, so this is, uh, Medicaid revenue. So, the, the problem, I will just say for this slide, is this is comparing the prior year. So, you're looking at a year ago of December. So, yes, our revenue's up from a year ago. Is it up to where I budgeted? No. So, that's why I wanted to clarify. The budget to actual is the biggest, the biggest indicator for me of how we're doing for what I actually budgeted. Year-over-year is not particularly useful for me, 'cause I'm dealing with the current year. What, what we made last year, I mean, it, it's important in that it helps me deal with trends, but right now, I have to deal with what I budgeted versus what's actually going on. Um, state general fund, uh, is exactly flat, we're down to the 10.8. We should stay there unless they decide to give us more money for some reason. County funding, um, uh, is, is essentially flat, and then all other, um, looks like it's up a bit, and I think that's just related to some grants and things that we have in this fiscal year. We didn't have in last year. Okay, so, expenses. Administration is up from last year, but that one is under budget for the year, year-to-date. Um, provider network expenses are up, 100% would expect that. We've, we've done a lot of things in the last year to, to support the provider network, from funding adjustments and one-time payments and the direct care wage adjustments, and, and all of those types of thing are, are playing into all of that. So, none of this is surprising, none of it is, are things we didn't expect. I think year-to-date, budget to actual, they're just slightly over-budgeted expense, not, not much. Um, and we have some, uh, longer months in the, this first part of the year. Uh, grants are not terribly different, a little over a million, and then all other is roughly flat as well. So, this again is comparing, uh, revenue from la, from last fiscal year. I know that title says October, but the, the chart legend there says December '21 to December '22. So, you can see that, yes, our revenue is up, our expenses are also up. We knew that, we planned that. Um, so, net income compared to the prior year is down, but not down to a level that we weren't planning for. That's just because we did push out more money, and you're comparing two, two fiscal years separately. So, this is the top 15 providers, as always, with their amounts. I can't read them for you from here, but if you have any questions from there, I'm happy to answer them.
So, that, uh, based on what you told us, uh, when do you think you'll have some information to see where the, you know, what, what direction we're headed in?
Revenue-wise? Yeah, so, I asked Nasser to help me kind of dig into the eligibility trend, because it, because our eligibility is so many categories and so many different rates and age, gender mixes and all those sort of things. First, I need to pinpoint really, I, I see a drop in DAB. I shouldn't see a $900, $900, 900-person drop in DAB over one month. That doesn't happen. So, that's concerning to me. That, that's not a realistic number that it should drop in a month's time. So, it'll take a little time to do, a little bit of analysis to find out what's going on, what happened, where did those people go? Um, and should we have been paid for those people? So, that will kind of be the first step, is what happened? Should we have been paid for those people? And is it something I need to then reach out to the state and say, hey, you didn't pay me for these 900 people, and 850 of them should have been, we should have been paid for? Um, so, that will be the first part. And then, depending on the outcome of that, will, will impact, okay, does that mean I need to, I need to look at our revenue for the full year differently? Again, depends on the outcome of that, of that first piece. The other thing is, at some point, depending on where, how I'm thinking the actuary is going to respond to the end of the PHE, I may adjust revenue, um, in an amendment. If I think it's gonna happen really fast, and then if we start to see things drop really fast, we'll adjust it. Um, but I think we will likely throw some scenarios together and then determine what we think is the most conservative and realistic at the same time, um, to adjust the budget to. So, that, I said a lot of, like, I don't know yet, is, is, is the short version of that. It is a lot.
Well, as long, as long, it, it sounds like you have a plan to,
Yep.
uh, attempt to rectify or, or reconcile,
Yep.
is a better word, of exactly what's happened on, and then figure out a plan of action from there. So, I'm sure you'll,
Exactly.
inform us as we move forward.
Yep, I'll keep you all posted, it's the kind of, any of the major, major things we find out, or any adjustments we're planning to make, um, and, and certainly Dana will do the same in her, her reports as well.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
I was just wondering, is this something, uh, this trend, is it something we've seen in other counties as well?
So, that's the part I don't know yet. So, once we have a, a better understanding of what's really going on, should I have been paid for those? Is it really just a trend that's happening? Then I'll reach out to the other CFOs and ask if they're seeing similar things, because then that might mean, mean there's a bigger issue that maybe the state doesn't realize. So, they don't go through and like necessarily validate that I get paid for everyone I should have. That's kind of where we have to, we're responsible for that, that piece of it. So, that's why we look at this stuff over time, to see if there's any material changes that would make me ask more questions.
Thank you.
Yes. So, so you've seen the drop in DAB, so, deaf, aged, and blind. Uh, what about TANFs, you said, and, or Healthy Michigan?
So, TANF, I haven't really seen a, a material drop. Um, Healthy Michigan is actually up, but again, that's not our moneymaker.
That's clear, too.
So, unfortunately, the category that, that we have the highest rate sell-in is the one I saw the drop in. So, even though in total, when I look at month over month, in total, it's actually an increase still. It's not offsetting the revenue that I'm losing in the DAB population from the other, the increase in TANF or Healthy Michigan.
Okay. All right, so that, that helps me a little bit. Um, and I know our, our expenses are, are high, and they continue to stay high.
Mm-hmm.
That's, is we're helping out our, our providers who are helping out the people we serve, so that's all good. Um, so, you were talking about, you were talking about, um, the po, the, with the end of the emergency, people are going to have to start, um,
Reapplying.
reapplying. If they don't, or recertifying, then we're gonna see a drop in revenues, starting in May or June, or whenever that's gonna happen. Do you, and we don't have a sense at this point if Milman is gonna affect their rates. Milman's insights is the guy that do, do our rate setting, but we don't know if that's gonna be retro back to May, or they're gonna finally get their act together in October, November, and make the adjustment for next year.
Yeah, if it were up to me, they would be already looking at this and making estimates on how this might roll out. Um, that is not what they're going to do. I think ideally, the best-case scenario I see happening is I'm doing it within the fiscal year, retroactive to the, where the emergency order ended. Um, do I think that they'll do that? I'm not really sure. Um, that wa, that certainly will, we will be pushing for that, and that, I will definitely bring that up, as not only are we not seeing the, the trend that you predicted, the 5%, but now we're gonna start to see the trend go down even further, um, as people fall off of Medicaid. And so, that's gonna get material really fast.
It will, but if they do that, and they, and we hit the end of the fiscal year, and they say, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna do a retro reduction in, in your rates or in the numbers, um, we've already paid our providers, we'll have to adjust with them, and we'll end up having to pull money out of our reserves to offset,
Yes.
well, we've already paid everyone.
So, as we go through this process, we will have to make some decisions on what we are seeing exactly happen versus what we intend to do about that. And I, when I say that, I mean, if we see revenue start to go down, do we make, make choices, as we didn't, you know, '18 and '19,
Right.
um, to cover the difference? And those will be choices we have to make potentially going forward.
Would we perhaps be in a better place to suggest to them that, that as people are coming off, that we adjust the rate over a multiple, multiple-year period, so it's not as big a change?
Well,
rather than fighting the bullet?
The unfortunate part, um, is our, our, our budget is so year-to-year. There is no guarantee that next year doesn't look to, when they adjust it, it'll be fine. There's enough in the, um, appropriation to fund this. I mean, what, people say we're underfunded, we are underfunded. Do I say that everyone's underfunded? I don't think I do, because I know a lot of places that, that do send money back. Um, there are, there are funds within the system, it's a matter of how it's distributed and who gets it.
Okay, so my last question is, do we try to do some forward estimating based on what if we were at revenue levels or,
We will.
people, people levels back on, let's say, fiscal year 2019 or 2020? So, you know, where, wherever the number of revenue, wherever we were at at that point, saying this is where we could possibly be,
Yep. So, that'll be part of the analysis,
In fourth, okay.
once we get to what's going on. And then, as we start to think about what, what's happening with, um, the re-enrollment process and what that actually rolls out to look like, so, you know, they also, you don't necessarily wanna, wanna get, put the cart before the horse either.
No.
So, we'll, we'll start to, to do analysis prior to actually any of that being implemented, just to be on the safe side, so I have scenarios lined up, saying, all right, this is where we're, we're leaning closest to, this is the one we're gonna go with, much like we do with the budget. I had revenue estimates of 0% increase, 2%, 5%. We went with 2, based on them thinking it was 5.
Right.
Um, I could've gone with 0. Um,
Yeah.
I wanna believe when they think there's an increase in eligibles, that that's what's gonna happen. Um, so, we'll do all those scenarios as this plays out. It's kind of, to some degree, we can't do too much until we start to get more into it to really understand, and I have to pinpoint what, what's actually going on right now. And is that a real thing? Is it something that is an error, and then we will get that money? Without knowing that stuff just yet, I can't make a, a real clear, this is exactly what we would do, because I, it's a lot of typically, we would do multiple scenarios of what things look like as revenue goes on, and then pick somewhere in the middle of that.
Okay, so do we think this might be just a error in chance?
I'm hoping. I, I don't know how we would lose 900 people in one month.
It's, I can't.
That's very odd to me.
No, we, we're gonna see that in a couple of months, but not really now.
Yeah, and, and not even that. I don't, that, literally, the only way people come off of it is if they pass away.
When they don't recert, well, or, I think we're gonna see drops like that as people don't recertify.
That's entirely possible. That's entirely possible.
But, I can't imagine seeing it now 'cause we're not in recertifying.
No, there's no way for people to fall off.
Okay, that's all I had.
So, can you clarify, is the, the date that it ends till March eleventh and so thirty days later? Or what, what are the dates that are out there?
Um, Suzanne's gonna speak in far more detail to that whole thing than, than I am prepared to speak on, but she has all that information. I'm looking at Suzanne.
Okay.
May eleventh.
Thus, in going through this with another piece, the websites and everything that's at the state level is totally confusing. And trying to talk to a live person is a miracle.
Yeah.
I mean, it's gone from March to April to now May. And then the part of the other question is, do you fall off immediately or do you get notified?
And I don't know any of those answers, but I think I will.
But I mean, if that, if that, if it's fall off immediately, that cliff is gonna be enormous.
Well, so I think Suzanne's gonna again, maybe she is now, go for it.
I'm gonna answer a few questions. Um, so that May eleventh date is penitentip. It is not on the state website yet. The state is, uh, not committing to a date, but they have updated their website actually. There are a number of FAQs, a number, some information available. And OCHN has, um, posted that on our website. We have it on our, uh, rotating banner and linked to the website just to get the information out there. But just note that date is still fluid and we don't wanna put a lot of communication out there until we have a better understanding of the actual date of when it's going to end. But they are putting information out there about the timeframes of how long it would,
But we, I guess, we'll, we'll circle back later. We've got many other items. But when you go on the homepage, you don't see that. What you see up front, like My Bridges, which is where more, most people are gonna go? It's not there. You got, you gotta look for it.
You've gotta click into the links, which is true. You do have to click into those links.
How many people are gonna click into the links?
And then you can get, there are a number of FAQs that can answer a lot of different questions.
Yeah, but that's, that's a lot of work for people who are in.
Okay. All right, thank you for the information. Um, we'll look forward on you to future, uh, information. And, um, I'm sure we'll get a plan and, uh, a plan going forward.
Yep.
So, thank you. Okay, so, uh, we've got five contractual matters. Hopefully, we'll be able to move through those quickly. Uh, the first one is yours. Uh, it is the Raymond Robson Audit Preparation work that they do. And why don't you tell us what you need?
Yep, I'm gonna back up a couple of years just because I know some people weren't here, um, even last year, um, when we renewed this contract. But, so, uh, Raymond Robson, at one point was our auditor. Um, and we stopped using them as an auditor when we brought them on as a consultant for our state reporting. So, our state reporting is historically, um, through most of my career here, been primarily once a month, a lo- very large set of reports. Takes us several months to do it. Um, and we were plugging along and one of my director level positions left shortly before, before that process for, I think it was fiscal year nineteen off the top of my head. Um, and so what we did was bring Raymond in to be able to, um, populate and do that report for us. Um, he does, he, the person that we work with does this for multiple areas in the state, McComb being one of them, uh, Region Ten, a couple of those. So, he's very efficient with his approach to the template and how to populate it. So, we've had him on contract for a couple of years now. Since that time, the, um, state reports have gone from one time a year to three times a year. We do them every four months now. Um, so this mu- this process that takes us several months to do it in-house, all of my staff, several months, is now three times a year. So, it's essentially a full-time job now because of that. And so, we've had this person on contract kind of working through, doing this with us. And he also has been able to help us with implementation of our new system, um, the last probably six months 'cause we've been struggling with the vendor a little bit. Um, and prior to that implementation, he also did some work with us on our general ledger structure. So, he's been on contract for the last couple of years. Um, I had, just recently had a conversation with Dana about this, at, at this point now, from a business continuity perspective, it may be time to hire someone because it is enough work now that it's just a full-time job. So, right now, that's kind of where we're at as far as talking about job description. Doesn't, in, from a business continuity perspective, um, should we not have that external resource? We have the resource inside. Again, that's assuming we can get someone and they stay. Um, so we'll be working on that over the next few months to try to draft a job description and start to recruit someone that can be trained to do this. But, in the meantime, um, this, we still work with Raymond. They are currently helping us with our, um, year-end reports that are due at the end of this month. Um, and also they are helping us, they do a little bit of audit prep for us. So, that just, then our auditors don't have to do it. So, it's really offsetting the audit expense. So, either the auditors do it or we have them do it. Um, we just don't have the, the, the internal capacity for all of the work that comes with audit season. It's, um, it's a significant amount of work and kind of takes basically everyone offline for a number of months. Um, so they help with that a little bit. And then they are helping us with, um, some of the transition from our previous financial system to the new one because they have experience with this new one, um, in other areas and can, are kind of helping us sort out some of the struggles we're having with the vendor we've been working with. So, this request is for, um, a year extension for this contract. And in that time, we will be working on that job description and posting of that, of that role to be able to build our capacity internal to be able to do this.
Okay, all right, thank you. Yes, I, I believe these, um, audit preparation services are very important. We deal primarily with public money. Uh, it's entrusted to us to, um, uh, distribute appropriately and to account for appropriately. And I think, uh, that type of service is very valuable, especially since we don't have the person power available to do it. So, is there any questions? If not, can we have a motion, uh, to recommend this to the board, full board?
Still moved.
Support?
Support, uh, moved and supported. Uh, please call the roll. Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you. Uh, the next two items we have are contract amendments, uh, with, uh, our, our, our legal counsel, Kalana Ali.
Good evening. Hi, Kalana Ali, Chief Legal Officer for OCHN. I am remote today.
Okay, thank you. So, the first one is the PIHP Contract Amendment Number Eight.
Yes, so this amendment is, it does not have any budgetary impact. Um, this amendment is specifically related to the ad hoc reporting addition requirement that would permit the department to require an ad hoc report with, with a thirty day notice to OCHN. Um, and the other piece of this amendment also includes, uh, the allocation and reinvestment strategy for Medicaid payments and what that looks like, uh, for us as an organization. And that would include those Healthy Michigan and Medicaid payments that we receive from the department as part of our agreement.
And you've had an opportunity to review those changes and find them to be acceptable?
Yes, so this is something that, um, has been a part of our ongoing, uh, negotiations with the department in our overarching PIHP meetings, which meet, um, regularly.
Okay. Are there any questions? So, this is one of those contracts where zero dollars, it's an unfunded requirement that we have to do. If we, and if we don't sign it, we lose the opportunity to be a PIHP essentially?
If, I mean, to say that it's non-negotiable, yes. It is a non-negotiable, um, in, in that we must execute our PIHP contractual amendments to remain complying with our contractual obligations.
Thank you. Well, I, I think that's been pretty simply put to us. When I first read this, I was a little concerned. It was almost one point two billion dollars, but that was the contract amount, not the impact. So, there is no budgetary impact. So, uh, this is pretty much a language amendment. So, uh, could we have a, a, a action on this item?
Move to move forward to the full board.
A motion and support. The roll call, please.
Mr. Torres?
Yes.
Ms. Namie Dyer? Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Uh, Kalana, you have the next item, which is the CMHSP Contract Amendment.
Yes, sir. So, this is the, um, CMHSP Contract Amendment. Uh, this one also does not contain any budgetary impact. There are no dollars. Uh, this amendment was specifically to add the mediation dispute resolution provision to the agreement. And as you are aware, the Mental Health Code was amended to allow for mediation to be permissible in a provision of mental health services which allows persons served to invoke or engage in mediation if they are unhappy with the services that they're receiving under certain parameters. Um, this amendment specifically, uh, simply adds it to the customer service area of our agreement and also references it, uh, the attachment and the policies and guidelines on the department's website. Excuse me.
All right. Uh, is there any questions for Kalana on this issue? Seems very similar to the last one. You, you not even, Mr. Landman, non-negotiable? So, well, yes, it's not negotiable, but I happen to think that adding, uh, um, the capability of mediation for, for the members we serve is a really good thing. That's one more avenue for them when they have issue. Absolutely, I agree with you. All right, could we have action on this item?
Still moved.
Motion?
Support.
Supported. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Ms. Namie Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
Uh, yes.
Motion carries.
Kalana, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your hard work. Thank you. All right, next is the CPI Contract. Uh, Adam Genovey's gonna handle that. And this has to do with, uh, appears a short extension on building, uh, security services contract?
Yep. Pardon me. Uh, yeah, CPI is our, uh, one of our security vendors here. They do, um, some of our electronic security, uh, monitors, security cameras, card readers, speakers, mics, switches, remote door openers. Um, this is just a four-month extension while we get, uh, the RFP, um, going. Uh, we've been, they've been a vendor of ours since twenty eighteen. Um, and in their upcoming work, we want a few new card readers and remote panels, uh, remote fire panel. Um, and then hopefully some, uh, some new mag locks and card readers on some of the doors around here. And, uh, yeah, while we go through the RFP, that is it.
Okay. So, the, what you're looking forward to is an RFP with some upgrades, uh, for building security?
Correct.
Okay. All right, is there any questions?
Well, yeah, clarify. So, at the bottom, it, the notes says a four-month extension. But if I'm reading this right, it's March thirty first through the end of August. June, July, August.
Yes.
Four or five months, I guess. I just wanted to be consistent. Are we approving the four months or the timeframe?
No, both.
April, May, June, July, August.
The money's tied to the timeframe.
Okay.
Okay.
It's not adding up to me, but I'll let somebody else think.
It's a question. Um, have we already put out the RFP?
Um, I'm gonna look to my team for that. We have not yet.
I know, we have not yet. Okay, so we expect to be able to do it within the timeframe?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other, thank you, Adam. Any other discussion? All right, uh, action on this item?
I'll make the motion. The support?
Motion?
Support?
Support, thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Torres?
Yes.
Ms. Namie Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Adam, and look forward to that process. Uh, last is our placebo contract. Uh, Tricia, I'm gonna say this right, Zizumbo.
Absolutely perfect.
Not bad for an Irishman.
Not bad.
Okay. All right, Tricia, what do you have to, uh, bring before us this evening on the contract?
Good evening. This is for a one-year contract, um, extension for our Dochebo Learning Management System, which you all use. And I'll use this opportunity to say, don't forget to do your training due next month. Um, so what this will do, will, um, extend the contract for one year, but also be able to set us up for launching to the network as well. So, our initial contract was two years where we were able to build out the system for both you and our internal staff. Um, and now we have been spending the last year building out that contract for when we expand to the network. Um, and this extension will help with that, providing monthly active users as well as, um, a, and our extended enterprise for the, um, the launch of the network.
All right, um, for those who may not know, um, this is an important tool. It's our learning and training tool internally. Uh, we're, in fact, uh, the, the public should know that even all the board members have to go through an annual retraining, uh, which is, which is a good thing. Um, and so as a result, and we'll be doing that next month, as you, as you pointed out. So, uh, but more importantly, for those who are delivering the services, to have the appropriate, uh, training and updates to the law and procedures that they have to follow. So, thank you for your, uh, your work on this, on this contract.
Thank you.
Is there any questions?
Yes, Mr. Land.
So, one of the other benefits with this is it means that we'll, by having more folks across the core providers using our tool, means we'll have a better sense of consistency and tracking and accountability that they're all getting the same consistent training and education. We can track who is certified versus who isn't, versus delegating it down to the core providers. Is that correct?
Yes, we're, starting, um, with our priority is the direct support, um, professional training curriculum. But we will have all of our contract required trainings, um, housed within the system. And that will also allow Marquita's team access to the data as soon as they need it. Yep, for NCQA, for audits, um, anytime we get questions from the state or anything.
Any other questions? There being none, action on this item?
Still moved.
A support, a, a motion?
Support.
With support, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Young? Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Ms. Namie Dyer? Mr. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. That concludes the business of the Business Operations, also known as the Finance Committee. And I thank the committee for their efforts and work. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we have other business. Suzanne, with events and outreach.
Hello, good evening. Just wanted to give you a few updates of some outreach and awareness. Um, so, we are continuing our onboarding, actually, I didn't mention this last, last month, but we are onboarding our SED providers. Um, started that in late January and plan to have that concluded by the end of this month. And then just some additional items that are listed that were mentioned last month, the Transition Connection Council, as well as the, uh, CMHA Winter Conference and the advocacy meeting with Dana. But something new that I didn't mention this month is, um, we hosted a CIT training at the Royal Oak Police Department. That was all last week. Um, as well as, um, we have the Youth and Family Care Connect, which is doing a soft launch this week. Uh, right now, we're communicating with our hospital and law enforcement, uh, partners just to kind of make sure some of those protocols are in place for the YFCC, the acronym YFCC. And then we'll be pushing out some communication this week, such as press release, FAQ, some flyers about it. So, we're really excited to finally be able to do a soft launch and then announce this great initiative. Um, and then I think it was mentioned last month as well is we're hosting our advocacy work group. We're starting those back up again this year. Um, hosting it tomorrow is the first advocacy work group. And basically, we're gonna be talking about different goals and objectives that we wanna try to focus in on coming in the new year. So, hopefully, you can join us if possible, be here, uh, from ten to twelve.
Next slide.
Um, and then we continue our conversations with the faith-based community in Pontiac. Um, continuing to talk about youth mental health issues. And we have a, a meeting coming up this week on Thursday to continue that conversation. As well as Dana is gonna be presenting her quarterly update to the Board of Commissioners on Thursday as well. Another exciting initiative, kind of related to our, Another exciting initiative, kind of related to our DEI, or actually IDEA initiatives, is the Courageous Conversations are starting up again. That's kind of an internal group where, um, leadership internally lead these courageous conversations and talk about different topics, and it's a way for people to open up and expand their understanding of DEI or IDEA initiatives. Um, we're also participating in, Christine Burke is participating in the Homeless Task Course meeting, and that's a number of different, uh, community partners that participate in that group that's coming up in March. Also coming up in March is our Abilities Awareness Event. It's gonna be, uh, March the eighth, it's gonna be from one to three here, uh, in the Michigan Room. We will be honoring our abilities champions from both Mork and CLS, as well as our micro enterprise, um, business owners will be here selling their items. Um, so I'll make sure I get that on your calendars, hopefully you can attend on March the eighth. Uh, another item I wanted to mention is, um, Dr. Poseos is actually working with the American Psychiatric Association Foundation, and they're bringing experts in on March the ninth, and they wanna meet with some of our school professionals to talk to them about, um, school mental health education, a school mental health education program, it's called Notice, Talk, Act at School. Um, so that's coming up on March the ninth, and it'll be hosted here at OCHN, in this, this room. Uh, next, our Co-Responder Initiative has been getting a lot of attention, couple of interviews were hosted with our, um, co-responders, one in Troy, and the one that, um, works primarily in Auburn Hills, um, both with WDET and the Oakland Press, so we're looking forward to those articles coming out. I'll make sure we share those in our press clippings with you. We have some press releases that are coming out this month, obviously honoring Black History Month, um, honoring Dana as the 2023 Top Twenty Dynamic CEOs, and then also highlighting Jewish Disability Awareness and Inclusion Month, as well as announcing the Youth and Family Care Connection opening. And last finale, not on the list, is what we were talking about, um, I, I have enough information to be dangerous, now I'm still learning as we go when it comes to the ending of the public health emergency. Um, as mentioned, we looked up, it's not on the state website currently. We did look up to try to find out when a potential end date is. May eleventh is what we came across, but that is still very fluid, as you know, the date keeps changing. So we're continuing to monitor that to make sure that we're up to date and aware. For now, as part of a communication plan, we did, as I mentioned, you can look on our website, we did post today, uh, on our rotating banner, uh, information about the ending of the public health emergency connected to the state website, because that's the information that we have right now. As I mentioned earlier, there are some updates to the state website, some FAQs, you do have to dig a little bit deep, but that information is available. And they're basically talking more about that communication plans are coming as they know the actual date. So we're gonna continue to monitor that, because when it comes to something like this, timing is really important, and we don't wanna put awareness out there before it's, it's really ready, and we wanna, for some people, May might seem pretty far out, and then if it continues to change, if that date continues to be fluid, it, the message will get lost. So we wanna be mindful about the timing of that message, and continue to monitor and follow a bit of the state's lead, there are gonna be developed materials and things like that. We wanna have the, a consistent message with the state as well. And then as we roll that out, we'll continue to work with our community partners, our faith-based partners, the Health Division, our providers, to make sure that we get the appropriate information out to individuals. So just continuing to monitor the situation, and, um, ensure that we get the appropriate awareness and communication message to people. Are there any questions?
Um, um, the School Breakfast Initiative you guys are doing here, and who, who is invited to that, or who participates in that?
We're actually planning that right now, um, we're getting ready to put some information out, um, the, um, I wanna make sure I get the acronym right, APAS has requested to meet with a, a number of different school districts to talk about this program, so we're gathering that list. We have a number of counselors, we have a lot of the superintendents contact information, but sometimes we wanna make sure it gets to the right person, so we're working to get that information, and we're gonna put a flyer out to invite people to come to the conversation.
It, it might be good, too, to have school board members there as well.
Okay, yeah.
That would probably, and, but all the others are really good, too, so, but just.
I have a wonderful intern who keeps finding all of this information, so I'll make sure she gets some school board chairperson's information as well.
Thank you, and Oakland Intermediate School Board members, too.
Yeah, we'll work through our partners at Oakland Schools as well.
Thank you.
And that's how we'll probably funnel some of the information out, too, to invite people to come to the conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
This is our second opportunity for, uh, public comment, is there any public comment on the line?
There is not.
Is there anyone in the building that would like to provide public comment? Hearing none, we'll go on to board member comments.
Mr. Young? Mr. Furman?
Thank you so very much for all the presentations tonight. Um, always very worthwhile and detail-oriented, especially the, um, the quality of presentation. Again, um, very worth, very worthwhile and very important for us as board members to know, so thank you very much.
Ms. Namie Dyer?
No other comments, have a good night.
Mr. Torres?
Uh, no comments, thank you.
Dr. Hans?
Thank you for all the presentations, especially to Marquita for that extensive report. Um, I would hope that at some point, we have a study session dedicated to the, uh, and better understanding of Quapip and Hades, especially because we still have a lot of work to do to meet the benchmarks, thank you.
Mr., uh, hold on. Ms. Root? Ms. May? Ms. Woodruff?
Thank you for tonight's reports, uh, it was very informational and enlightening, thank you.
Mr. Lansman?
Uh, thank yous to Suzanne, Marquita, Adam, and Anya for their efforts and their teams and their presentations tonight, thank you.
Ms. Newman?
Thank you, excuse me, thank you everybody for their participation in the meeting, and I appreciate so much the work that goes on in this building, so thank you. You had comments?
Um.
Oh, okay.
Right, um.
Oh, okay.
I would look for a motion from someone on the board, uh, to move us into closed session per Public Act Two Sixty Seven.
Does anybody else have any more comments to make, or? I'll make that motion and go into closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right.
That closed session is with respect to Section One A of the Open Meetings Act.
Right. Um, so if there's no discussion, if we, all vote, please. And if it doesn't pass, we will just be adjourned for the evening.